I would invite everyone to rise, please. And we will be led. Do you want to introduce who's going to lead us?
Mr. Cannon. My mic is on, correct? Okay, great. I have the pleasure tonight of introducing one of our students, Hannah Sharp, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Katie, will you take care of both, please? All right. Next item on the agenda is roll call.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Here.
Dr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Manning?
Here.
Timmons is absent. And Mrs. Ward?
Here.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I will move.
Nasa, second?
I'll second.
Beth? All right. Any corrections to the minutes? All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is board reports and information items. I will look first to the board to see if anybody has anything they want to report. Beth?
The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, September 14th, and we first talked to Jeff Markley, one of Bainbridge Township trustees, about the Jogga Lake development. And he was telling us some of the things that they're doing to develop that area. And he mentioned TIPS, which are going to probably be in place for some of those businesses, which is a type of tax credit for the businesses. So he explained that. Great conversation with him. Then we talked about the tax complaints. And all the tax complaints have been settled by the County Board of Review, so those are all taken care of. And we talked about the virtual credit card payment to our vendors. And we were approached by a local businessman. And so we are going to give him a shot and see how he does.
That's it? Okay. Thank you. All right, who else? Nasa?
Legislative. It's this quick and easy. They held some sponsor testimony on two bills. On House Bill 126, there was a sponsor testimony. And that bill would require school boards to pass a resolution approving a property valuation complaint or counter complaint prior to filing that complaint. And also send written notices to property owners indicating intent to file complaint or counter complaint. So that's just starting that process. There was also, the committee held sponsor testimony also on House Bill 140, which would affect schools. And that was the one that would modify the form of election notices and ballot language for property tax levy, so that it was easier for taxpayers to understand it, to put it in dollar amounts instead of how it's done right now that seems to be confusing to people. And then sponsor testimony was held on House Bill 122, which would establish and modify requirements regarding the provisions of telehealth services, school psychologists, speech, language pathologies, pathologists, occupational therapists, occupational assistants, and physical therapy assistants, among others. That was it. That's pretty much the only activity for right now.
Okay. That first one, House Bill 126, that's, they've been talking about that for a while, right? Is this just finally?
Right. That was before. And now they did another sponsor testimony for that. Now that they've come back. Yeah, that was about the whole complaint process and counter complaint.
Okay.
And how they want to add more layers to that process that's already in place.
Okay, thank you. All right, who else?
I got a report to make. So I've been asked numerous times by community members, parents, and neighbors, where I personally stand on mask requirements. And I thought it appropriate for me to take an opportunity to give my personal views. This is not something that's from the board. It's not a board statement or anything like that. This is my personal views that I've given to people. And they listen and they say, "That's pretty good. I understand that. I can see why you have that view." So I figure I would share it with everybody while I have the microphone. And I want to take this opportunity and make this personal statement and my stance on the debate between requiring masks as a making them optional in our school. Although it pains me to have students and staff wear masks, I'm well aware of the controversy concerning this. It is a decision I do support. Here's my personal reasoning. It is because of the quarantine rule and the potential of us to have mass numbers of students being sent home for five to 10 days, missing critical academics, missing critical athletics, missing critical social events in school. The Department of Education and Department of Health provided us with this flow chart. All right? This is the one that schools are following. And if you look at the flow chart, the no mask mandate is over here, the optional, on this side. This is on our website also, I believe. We have this posted, if you want to refer to that. But all this has, you have to go through on this side if you're an unmasked school. And this is for the masked school. There's only one drop-down box on the masked school. And it says, "Individuals can safely remain in normal in-person classroom setting and participate in extracurricular and sport activities as long as they have no symptoms." And that's if you came in contact with someone diagnosed with COVID, sitting next to them in class, in the cafeteria. If we weren't a mask mandate school, there's what they have to go through. And all of whom don't leave to going back to normal. Okay? This is what really drove me to support that mask mandate, to keep normal in-person classroom settings and participate in extracurriculars as long as they have no symptoms. My position to keep kids in school and doing their activities at their fullest is what's best for them. The only way to ensure that right now is the mask requirement. Otherwise, we risk having those mask quarantines, canceling football games, canceling soccer games, cross-country meets, et cetera. I'm not going to risk that for our students when they shine in a normal school setting. Standardized testing data is starting to come out with early indications that keeping our students in person last year was beneficial with their education. We want to do the same this year. So there are some schools that did optional mask starts, okay? Madison High School had to close school due to two positive COVID test results because they had to quarantine 250 students. They were quoted saying it was the tentacles of the high school schedule that caused 250 to be quarantined off of two positive results. This was back in the first week of September. Cloverleaf started with mask optional. And 11 days into school, 320 students quarantined. Just out of, they reversed back to masking, both of those did. So did Solon, Berea, Menor, Wattsworth after they saw what this was creating, something we didn't develop. This is Department of Education, Department of Health developing this that we have to follow. In fact, I have a quick story, kind of independent of the COVID stuff. It goes back a few years before this. My niece was taking her college experience at OU. And she was taking business classes there. She could not talk enough about how Mr. Trippie, Mr. Kepros, Mr. Murphy prepared for college. She said, and I quote, "Half the students had to drop out and retake my college economics class, and I breezed through it, not because I was so smart, but because I already knew 90% of the material from high school." I ended up tutoring a bunch of people in Class 2, end quote. Here's another one, a little closer to home, a lot closer to home. My daughter is a first-year freshman at Penn State. She's taking a stats class there. She had Mrs. Garrett for high school stats here. And she says, "You know where this is going." She rocked the first two tests and on her way to a 90% plus A in the class. These are important stories because what they had in common was the in-person learning versus other schools last year that did remote learning. She's tutoring other kids from all around the state, all around the country that are in there, and she's above them academically. Because, and I feel it's because of the in-person learning and the one-on-one. So in conclusion, it was a decision based on a logic structure to ensure the best chance for our students and staff to keep learning in person. Dr. Kraus, I refer back to you.
Thank you. Any other board reports? All right, now I'm looking this way.
Thank you. So I'd just like to also make a statement that Kenton prides itself on being a school and a community where families, staff, and community members gather to support and nurture each of our children. We can all agree that these are very trying times that require very difficult decisions. We all want to protect our children and provide them with the very best possible educational experience and opportunities. COVID-19 procedures and protocols, specifically masking requirements, have caused disagreement within our community. We have listened to that. We understand. And we have heard both sides very loud and clear. One of our core peaceful environments at Kenton tenants is respect. Respect for each other, for our students, our staff, and our community. And that respect requires the ability for everyone to listen to one another and continue to work together, especially when we may disagree. We can all agree that our number one priority is our students' education, their safety, and their well-being. And so I would urge the community and our school community that together we can continue to work and make Kenton stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we can move on to the next item on the agenda, commendations. I have no commendations.
I don't think they're going to be on there, too.
Great. All right, the next item on the agenda is hearing of the public on agenda items. And do we have one person speaking to an agenda item?
She didn't mention this. Emily? Is it Henfield?
No.
That's okay. Is this an agenda item or not? I'm sorry. No?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda are financial items.
Katie Poe's got one. Check her report.
Yep.
Not an agenda.
All right. Thank you. All right, we will move on to Item 7 on the agenda, financial items. We have Items A through M. So can I have a motion to approve Items A through M?
I'll still move.
I heard Nasa second.
I'll still move.
Thank you, Beth. All right, comments, questions on A through M? Or Paul, anything you would like to highlight for the group?
Just real quick, and I will speak to it in my update. But as you noticed, September is filled with financial items, which is very common. There's nothing new additional in this September agenda versus last September agenda. There was the set aside requirements. There's the transfer of funds to the Permanent Improvement Fund related to the set aside requirements, asking for your approval of a new fund due to a grant that we received, you know, annual appropriation spending plans, five-year forecast, things of that nature. And again, I will speak more to that in my update later on this evening.
And Tom, we didn't talk before the meeting, but you do not have to abstain from this vote. You can vote affirmatively.
Right.
Yeah. If you choose. All right, anything else from the group? Nasa?
I don't know. Paul wants to clarify if you can do the report with the set aside. Now, that's because we don't have a permanent improvement. We are required by law to take from our general fund.
That is correct.
Put it into that because we don't have permanent improvement.
That is correct. In the past, the district paid for permanent improvements out of the general fund, which is permitted. This particular code section, 331318, I believe, requires that if you do not have a permanent improvement levy, that the district must choose to set money aside in the Permanent Improvement Fund to a level that is reflected at promote the Ohio Department of Education. And in our case, it's just slightly less than $460,000. But yes, that is a requirement.
Thank you. That's good. Thanks for pointing that out. That's good information. All right, anything else? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Item 8, Certified Personnel. We have Items A through E. Can I have a motion to approve A through E? Beth, can I have a second?
Mr. Timmons, second.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, comments, questions, items to highlight. Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yep.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is Classified Personnel. We'll take this in two parts. First is A through E. Can I have a motion to approve A through E?
I'll still move.
Nasa, second?
I'll still move.
Beth? Thank you. Comments, questions? All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is also Classified Personnel. Item G. Can I have a motion to approve Item G?
I'll still move.
Wait a minute. Is it G and H?
You can take G and H together, I think.
Yes, you can.
Yes, I do. I apologize. So, motion to approve G and H. Was that Beth that said yes? Okay, so Beth, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Nasa? All right, comments, questions? All right, you can call the roll, please.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Abstain.
And Dr. Kraus?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Supplemental Contracts. We have, again, in two parts. First, A through C. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll still move.
Nasa, second?
I'll second.
Bill, thank you. Comments, questions? All right, you may call the roll.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is also Supplemental Contracts. Item E. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll still move.
Nasa, second? Beth, thank you. I think you can call the roll.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
And Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
I'm sorry, one second. Mr. Timmons?
Mr. Timmons.
I think we're looking for an abstention from you, sir.
Becky.
Sorry, it's on the backside, sir.
Thank you.
No. This is for winner.
Okay, I'll abstain.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda with business is Item 13, Teaching and Learning. We have one item. Can I have a motion to approve Item A?
I'll move.
Nasa, second?
I'll second.
Tom, thank you. Comments, questions? All right, you can call the roll.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Special Education. We have Items A through E. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll still move.
Nasa, second?
I'll second.
Tom, thank you. All right, you can call the roll.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes. Next item on the agenda with business is New Business. We have two items, A and B. Can I have a motion to approve?
May I make an item in, under B?
Item B.
Okay, may I speak to that?
Yep.
So if you could please remove Melody Colignio for the pupil transportation. That is, she's no longer attending.
Which one is that? It is in the professional script, B.
Yeah. Item 16, letter B, Professional Trips. Melody is no longer attending the National Association Meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so as amended, can I have a motion to approve Items A and B? Or did I do that?
No, you're right.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll still move.
Nasa, Beth, I'll take you as a second. Thank you. All right, I think you can call the roll.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
All right, now we're to the portion of our meeting for hearing of the public on non-agenda items. So we have cards. We'll call you up as we get to your card. I think learning from past experience, it's awkward and uncomfortable to have to cut someone off mid-sentence. We'll still use a timer and time for three minutes. But at the two, since I believe you'll be facing this way when you speak, I'll just, you know, I don't have anything else to, I'll just raise my gavel when you have 15 seconds left, so you'll know to wrap it up if that's, that feels a little more polite to me somehow. So we'll do it that way.
Before we do that, there were a small handful of folks that filled out a card online, so I don't have the card here. But if you are here this evening and you filled it out online, we will certainly be calling upon you. If you did fill out a card and you are here, if you could just raise your hand so I know who you are. You filled out cards online on the computer? Okay. Your names are, I'm sorry? You filled it out online?
Yeah, Andrea. Did you fill out a paper one here in the room as well? Okay. Did you hear her name?
I don't see her name.
Can you say your name again?
Andrea Trimmer.
No, I heard her. I'm sorry. I just don't see her name. What is your name?
Marla Zwingy.
Yeah, she's on the phone.
Marla is, yeah. Do you have any idea what time you filled out online, roughly?
Just have her speak first.
And we'll get a card up.
And we'll get a card from her. So it's just the two of you then? Okay.
Somebody's got to go first. Do you mind? Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Marla Zwingy, and I live in Auburn Township. Thank you for having me. At the August Board of Education meeting, I had asked a question about social distancing for students during lunch, particularly the little ones at Timmons. It's mid-September now, and instead of asking that question again, I just decided to come with some ideas. So let's talk about outdoor student dining. Just because we live in Jogga County and we get, you know, 8,000 feet of snow a year doesn't mean that we should give up. So here I am, not giving up on this topic. I think one of the main science items that we can all agree on is that improved ventilation helps curb the spread of COVID-19. Outdoor dining options for Kenton students should be an obtainable goal. It's already happening in states like Maryland and Virginia. Yes, they have more agreeable weather than us. But for the next two months, we will have good weather, hopefully. And of course, in the spring. If our county vaccination rate continues to hover right around 53% for fully vaccinated individuals, we are going to need some forward thinking. What could this plan look like? It looks like hiring a local Jogga County carpenter to make a bunch of picnic tables for our kids instead of paying for plastic ones made in China. Or maybe it's working with our very own Auburn Career Center students in the construction program to help design long-term outdoor spaces for the Kenton campus. I've seen classes at the intermediate school being held outside already. Why not lunch? Does the school have zoning laws about where things can go? I'm sure you do. Can those be changed? I have no idea. But we can certainly start thinking big and asking those questions. Let's start with a picnic table. Where would the money come from for such an initiative? It would come from my pockets, not the schools. There are many parents and community members who are willing to pitch in financially or on a volunteer basis so that all Kenton students can reap the benefits of outdoor dining, including some good old vitamin D. How would we plan to coordinate moving food from inside to outside? Parent volunteers, a written operations plan. Let's establish a work group to idea generate instead of just coming to these meetings to use them as a platform to argue.
15.
We are here, we want to help. Many of us are on the PTO. Use our expertise and drive to help the community come up with a strategy. And once the pandemic ends, outdoor dining is technically not needed. But what's more Jogga County than breathing the fresh, wonderful air and having lunch outside?
Thank you. Thank you. So you can do that, yeah. And can you fill out a card when you're done speaking? Just when you're done, before you leave?
Hello, I am Andrea Trimmer. I can't tell if this microphone is working. I, first, I just wanted to thank you so much for keeping our students safe, keeping our schools open by maintaining the mask mandate so far. I think that's what's best for all of our students. But I wanted to come here, and I was planning to come here, to suggest some more ideas similar to Marla, especially opening bus windows. We all agree circulation of air is good. Why can't the bus windows be open? I recognize that that's not so simple, that that's a lot of time and effort from the bus drivers. But it came to my attention just before the meeting that we have a bigger issue with the buses. Some of the students are refusing to wear their masks. That puts the bus drivers in a horrible position. How can Kenton Board of Education empower those drivers to enforce what is currently a federal mandate on the buses? I feel for those drivers. That puts them in a really tough position. But that is currently a federal mandate. So what can we do to really empower those drivers to keep the masks on the kids, to keep them safe, and open windows if they want to? Let the kids open the windows if they want to? Do we need parent volunteers to show up at 4:30 and close all the bus windows? I would be happy to organize that. So that is my statement on buses. I won't even take the full three minutes.
Thank you.
Sarah Steinle? Sarah Steinle?
Hi, my name is Sarah Steinle. I am Bainbridge Township resident. At first, I want to say good evening to Mrs. Santilli and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'll piggyback on what Andrea and Marla are saying. We know that the more layers of protection that we have against COVID, the markedly lower risk of transmission there is. I, like many parents, are wondering what else we can do in addition to masking. I'm kindly asking the board to investigate the use of air purifiers in the classrooms. As parents, we can support this cause through fundraising, but we need your help. We cannot determine on our own if our buildings can even support the extra draw of power for these air purifiers. We ask the board to investigate how we might realize this opportunity to continue to keep our students and community safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Becker?
My name is Peter Becker. I'm a Jogga County Bainbridge resident. Can the board members assure us the local taxpayers that no form of critical race theory or the 1619 Project is taught or condoned in this school system? I'll leave that to you to answer.
So certainly, so across the country, the state, and of course, in our area, Mr. Becker, there's been a great deal of attention to critical race theory. So I would actually refer you for particulars and I can have Dr. Poe follow up with you, but just in general, our Kinston curriculum really has a focus where Kinston uses the approved Ohio Learning Standards. That guides our instruction. It's both rich content and lifelong thinking skills is a, is a focus. The learning standards are accessible certainly through the Ohio Department of Education, their website under the section titled "Ohio Learning Standards." We also have our social studies curriculum where history is taught and Kinston does follow the Ohio Learning Standards for Social Studies, which was updated by the Ohio Department of Education in 2018. Critical race theory is not part of the standards or curriculum. Our teachers are expected to teach about the events associated with enslavement and include text, literature, and primary source documents, the ODE, that illustrate the inequities and injustices suffered by groups of people in our country's history. Current events can often spark conversations in those social studies classes, particularly at the high school level. And are, we do have a board policy, it's 2240, which addresses how educators are expected to provide a balanced, factual perspective of controversial issues that may naturally be raised in a classroom discussion. Persuading students on a particular point of view is not permitted through this policy. It's the educator's role to teach students how to think and certainly not what to think. So there are a number of other things with our PEAK program. Certainly, you know, our training that we provide for our leadership. In addition, our OTES teacher evaluation system that's in place that requires administrators to consider the classroom environment and knowledge of students, including that cultural competency when we do evaluate teachers. And our framework for teaching and learning through our organization that we use called the Schlefti Center reinforces the school culture of building relationships and knowing our students in order to, to design appropriate, meaningful, engaging work for the academic growth of our learners. So also our curriculum decisions, they are up for adoption. They're made with established process with our teachers, our administrators, the Board of Education, and our parents are included in that process. So there's a number of things, but I would certainly invite you or any other member of the community to, you know, give us a call and Dr. Poe will be happy to go through and answer any specifics and we can also put that out on our website.
I was looking for a yes or a no.
Well then I, and I believe I stated that at the...
Verbal condone, I'm looking for simple yes or no.
And the answer, which I stated at the last meeting, was no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Hansel?
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Thank you for having us and thank you for your continued support of the masking in schools. Again, as I said at the last meeting, I had three children virtual learning last year and I never want to go back to that. I think we can all agree. Whether you sent your kids in school or kept them home, we don't want to do that again. But one thing I think that a lot of us will agree with is the importance of transparency between the district and the community. And having us here, hearing us, as long as we want to talk, however many people are here, as opposed to other districts that cut you off after half hour of public comments, I really appreciate that. I think it makes us all understand each other a little bit better, that we can hear different point of views and not get cut off. While saying that though, we have so many parents willing to help the board, the schools, teachers, students, so that our kids can stay in school. Willing to spend our own money, provide our own labor, all this. I would just like to ask if we know where any of the money from the CARES and other government programs that Kinston's received? I'm not a math person, I was an English major. So I look at what's on the website. I have no idea what I'm looking at. And I think part of it is I shouldn't need a degree in accounting or be a math whiz to see if parents really need to spend that money. If we could use it spending the money on hand sanitizers or extra masks for the kids, other stuff like that. Because I know that the CARES Act and American Rescue Plan does provide funding for contact tracing, all kinds of ventilation programs, all kinds of support for the schools. And I think we can all just agree that that's what's gonna keep schools open. So before we spend all this time gathering up the troops, do we know if the school can actually use the money themselves to do that and we don't have to worry about legal ramifications, the practicality of it, all of that? Thank you again, have a nice evening.
Thank you. We can talk about that, something to the other kids, fine. The money, so we can talk about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Michael Vaneski?
Hello. I usually don't come to these things here, but I have some kids in school and the, the mask mandate has bothered me a little bit. We are here today because part of the beauty of living is knowing that life is not guaranteed. That is why we live. We know there are risks when going outside. The data shows from last year, while over 300 kids died of COVID, ages 17 and under, more than 10 times that were killed in car accidents. Does that mean we should stop going out? Does that mean we should stop seeing our friends and our families? Does that mean we should stop going to games, stadiums? Stop creating memories? Stop taking vacations? No. Simply means that we, as humans, should be trusted to take the risk we deem necessary to live the beauty of life. Did you know that the H1N1 year killed four times as more kids than COVID did? Did you know that since then, there had been three flu seasons that killed double the amount of kids than COVID did last year? And do you know that every flu season since 2011 has killed more kids than COVID did last year? Those are the numbers, folks. You are far more likely to die in a car accident crash if you're 17, eight years and under, than dying of COVID. Our country was founded on freedom. If you want to wear masks and vax your kids, that's 100% your decision. You can do that, we support your freedom to make that decision. We can all agree on one thing, no matter how you feel about the government and the CDC, it has been, at the very least, inconsistent. I'm here to talk about masking kids and masking kids is wrong. There is no data that shows this is worse for kids than the flu. There is actually zero data that shows you're more likely to die of COVID than you are in a car crash. Actually 10 times more likely. Allow us the freedom to decide what's right for our family, what's right for what we want. And if we have families that want to build a natural immunity and all the arguments for that over the vaccine currently, then we should have the right to make that decision based on the inconsistent data that the government has fed us over the last 18 months. Remember,
You're at 15 seconds.
the beauty of life is not guaranteed. I can die of COVID tomorrow. I can get hit by a car tomorrow. I'm okay with that. I choose to live my life and take risks that I deem necessary because it's a beautiful life experience. And we should all be able to choose what level of risk tolerance we decide to take. I think we can all agree on that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heidi Ferk?
I want to thank you for this opportunity. I've been at other meetings where I was not allowed to speak because I wasn't in enough time, so I appreciate that. At the last school board meeting, I served this school board some affidavits declaring that your COVID mitigation strategy is unconstitutional, unnecessary, illegitimate, and ineffective. And the affidavit requested that you either rebut those claims that I made or cease and desist from your COVID strategy. Since you did not respond, I have decided to give you a second chance. So tomorrow, I will be emailing and dropping off another affidavit for each of you. And if, if you fail to rectify your policies or rebut these claims that I have made, be aware that my claims will stand in any court. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of information for the school board that you might want to consider. Neither DEWINE, the Ohio Board of Health, or the CDC that they all make their decisions on has any authority to make laws for school buses or masks. They're merely a branch of the Health and Human Services. The head is just one of 15 organizations in the president's cabinet and that is part of the executive branch. They don't make laws. However, the CDC does have a foundation which it has joint goals with. And it is, so it is tied to that. They also own more than 57 vaccine patents. They sell $4.1 billion of vaccines annually. And where masks are worn, cases rise and more people buy vaccines. And that was proven last year. Many different countries, Miami-Dade County, Florida, big spike as soon as the masks were on. Also, of all the 17 articles the CDC cites in the development of their policy for masking, not one looked at masks in isolation or against a control. The Maine Georgia study, as reported by the CDC itself, was not statistically significant, according to an article in the New York Magazine. Perhaps the board should also consider that the CDC itself admits that it never had an isolated sample of COVID-19 from an ill person. The FDA government site says, "Since no quantified virus isolates were available for CDC use at the time the test was developed and the study conducted, assays designed for detection of the 2019 N-COV RNA were tested with characterized stocks of an in vitro transcribed full-length RNA of no tyler spiked into dilute into mimic clinical specimen." Okay? And also, the PCR tests are not accurate. They're being discontinued in December. So no accurate tests, no isolated virus.
Thank you, that's your time.
Okay, no need for...
Nick Zahler?
My name's Nick Zahler. I'm in Scotland Drive here in Bainbridge Township. Last meeting, let me stop back a little bit. Superintendent Santilli commented on the district's website following the May 4th election. She said, "The failure of the May 4th levy was certainly a disappointment." She went on to say, "The need for funding remains." At the last board meeting, Dr. Kraus read a statement regarding the failed May 2021 levy. She stated, "As many of you know, between December 2020, when the board decided to place the levy on the ballot, and May 2021, when the election occurred, our financial picture improved significantly." Now, that's an interesting statement to make considering that just three months prior, Superintendent Santilli stated that the need for funding remains. My questions to this board are, first, what specifically changed between December of '20 and May of '21 to make such a significant improvement in the district's financial picture? Secondly, did the money from the American Rescue Plan of 2021 play a part in the significant improvement in the district's financial picture? Thirdly, was the August 9th decision to mask our children a requisite condition of receiving and/or spending the district's ARP funds? And lastly, I'd like to know when and where. Any answers to any questions that are asked for the board tonight will be posted. Thank you.
Thank you. So what, what I would recommend doing to sort of address, because we've had a couple of funding questions and I know we're working on forecasting. It, it seems to me that maybe a presentation is in order to sort of bundle these questions together. So to answer your question about when will these questions be answered, I think it would be best to have a board presentation to just kind of talk through some of these financial questions that are coming up. There are answers to all of your questions, but I don't want to just talk off the cuff and go, wait, I remember there was a, you know, workers' comp money and like, the answers are totally out there. If I tried to present it right now, it would not, it would not go well. So just give us some time, let us get our, our information together because that's really important information for the community to have and we are happy to share it, so we'll do that. And same with the, there was an earlier question, like where's the COVID money? So again, that's a legitimate question for the community to ask and we're happy to give you those answers. So just give us some time to get it in a way that we can present it clearly to the, to the community. All right?
Rebecca Zahler?
Yeah, Rebecca? Hello, I'm Rebecca Zahler. I'm from 7846 Scotland Drive. I'm in ninth grade. I wanted to say that I don't want masks and I think you should make them parents' choice. Me and my friends don't want them at school. I also do sports. I do cross-country, track, indoor track, and I want to do a lot of running sports. I was at the last race heat for cross-country and it was very hot and I had to go put a mask on and ride the school bus for an hour after my heat. That was last Saturday. Do you really want me to make it even harder for us to breathe on the mat, to wear masks on the bus? And as a student at school, I would please ask you to consider what I said and change for the mask policy. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Brianna McIver? Brianna?
Hello, I am Brianna McIver from the ninth grade at Kinston High School. I live in Tanglewood and I do not want to be masked. And these are my reasons. First of all, masks are highly uncomfortable to wear and to breathe in, especially for a student with asthma, a heart or lung issue. Secondly, what are we showing the younger generations? We are showing them to be scared of germs, other people, and that the air is toxic. Also, wearing masks is not healthy for younger kids and adolescents as they're still developing and trying to strengthen their immune systems. Masks are damaging their immune systems and preventing them from growing. Also, do masks really help if you aren't changing them daily? Or if you touch the outside of the mask, you now have all the germs you're trying to prevent from getting into your system on your hands, which will likely touch your face. The Jogga County Health Department for Schools recommends that unvaccinated are to be masked, but we do not have to. It's recommended. Another point is the flu is highly similar to the COVID epidemic. The flu and COVID both share these symptoms: fever, fatigue, cough, sore throat, headache, runny nose, shortness of breath, and diarrhea or vomiting. COVID just lasts longer and has the symptom of loss in taste and smell. So if we do not make a big deal of the flu, what is the fuss of COVID? As a student in the school, I ask you to honor the time I spent speaking and consider changing the mask policy to parent choice. Thank you and have a good evening. Since I have a little bit of extra time, I also would like to address another point. As COVID has progressed, children and adolescents' depression rates have increased along with suicide rates. Children not being able to express themselves when wearing masks has caused this. Also, mask wearing causes anxiety and stress, which is one of the lead causes of suicide and can affect test-taking. Thank you again for listening and I ask for you to honor my time speaking and make it a parent choice. Have a good evening.
Patrick McIver?
Hello, my name is Patrick McIver and I am in the fifth grade at Kinston Intermediate School. I do not want to wear a mask because it is uncomfortable and it weakens my immune system. If my immune system is weakened, then I will get sick faster and worse. The more... Whatever. Will not be able to fight COVID. So I say no mask, thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney McIver?
Hi, my name is Courtney McIver and I'm on Long Meadow Trail in Bainbridge. First of all, I'd like to say good evening and thank you to the board and Mrs. Santilli for the opportunity to speak tonight. My first topic is the tax levy. I knew back in 2019 that you were interested in having a PI tax levy. I told Nancy Santilli and Paul Pastello that I would love to help out with the levy committee because a PI levy was and is still needed in this school district. The levy did not get put on the ballot though until May of 2021. Why? Well, in looking back, I feel this was very strategically done by Mrs. Santilli and the board and not done based on need. If we truly needed the levy, which we do, it would have been on the November 2021 ballot. I think you held out until May 2021 for this levy to avoid the potentially, to avoid it potentially failing due to a larger voter turnout since it was a presidential election. So why did the levy fail this past May then? The residents of Kinston realized that having an operating levy on the ballot with the PI levy was the school district being greedy. Now all of a sudden, at the last meeting, it was announced that we don't need the levy on the November 2021 ballot. it was announced that we don't need the levy on the November 2021 ballot. And why is that? It's a strategic move by this board and Mrs. Santilli since there are current school board member seats up for election on this ballot in November, and because you are getting money from the state for enforcing mask mandates in school. I know you will try for a levy again in 2022, and when you do, my ask is that you put a PI levy on only. And in addition, that if and/or when you decide to make any cuts in the future, that you start with shaving the fat where it needs to be shaved instead of shaving it from the school buildings where our children are in need of staff and support. Maybe start in the top-heavy Board of Education office. Maybe eliminate some of those more recently added positions, which would free up more money and benefits, money we spend for benefits, which is even more than salaries in some cases. And take those salaries and use it to hire more guidance counselors so the kids can have actual counselors who could focus on them and their needs and not be so focused on administering state testing. Lastly, I would like to discuss masks again. I did last month, too. Last month, I spoke, and I would like to remind you all that it is my kids and it should be my choice. One of the things that I think Kinston did wrong with mandating masks is that we did not give an end date or reconsideration date. West G Schools, when they put their information out to their district, they gave a reassessment date. Yes, it still made people mad, but it gave them hope that you're going to look at it again, that it's not just, "Hey, this is it, end of story, tough, deal with it." Also, anyone with any cold symptoms can now be considered to have COVID.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you. My son, who is not here tonight, was sick. I took him to the urgent care. The doctor told me flat out, "This is a virus, it's not COVID." We tested him just to be safe because that's the responsible thing to do. He was negative, it was just a virus. She did explain to me that viruses are on the warpath right now because our kids' immune systems are weakened from wearing masks. She also did say, too, that RSV is on the rise because of it as well. So, I ask you to take that into consideration.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time. I was ending that. Give me that moment. Thank you.
Elena Hessian?
Hello, and thank you for having me and keeping our kids safe and keeping the mask mandate. I just wanted to make a few statements and rebuttal to the comment that beauty of life is not guaranteed. First, there is the idea that there are more kids that are killed in car crashes. Well, there's a federal policy in place to help with those numbers, and that's the seatbelt mandate and making sure that kids are in car seats. That's a policy that we can all follow and that hopefully we all do follow. And the idea that flu kills more kids than COVID, while this may be true, there are mitigation measures that we can take in getting our kids flu shots if they, if we so choose as parents. But right now, we can't do that for our kids. The flu, the COVID vaccine is not available to kids ages five to 12. But there is hope on the horizon. Within the last three weeks or so, there have been updates to the estimate on when COVID vaccines would be available to kids ages five to 12, and that's something that we can really look forward to. As Marla mentioned last month, she said, "Once my kid gets vaccinated, I really, you know, I, it's up to the parents whether they want a mask or not." And I totally agree with this. There's a lot of unpleasant things that we have needed to wait for, like, in our lives, some common things that we've all shared, things that we've looked forward to on the horizon that have taken a lot longer than a month and a half from now, one being maybe nine months for the birth of our children. It was unpleasant to wait for that because once you find out, you just want to have your baby. You know, there's other things, like getting a mortgage for your house. That's unpleasant, you have to wait for that. Think about it. It's all on the horizon. It's a very short period of time from now. So, I'm in support, in total support, of the continuation of masks. And I also wanted to second what the crew said over here about alternative measures that could be taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah Sharp?
Hi, I'm Hannah Sharp. I live on Lucky Bell Lane. I'm a senior at Kinston High School. Just wanted to start off by saying good job to the other students who spoke because it's really stressful to get in front of people who you don't think like your opinions, you don't think like your views, especially as a kid, when they're all bigger and older and better educated. But I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done. And going back to like the buses thing and having the windows down on the buses, I know for band, when we go on the band buses, we always put the windows down because it gets so hot in our heavy uniforms and really starts to smell. And so, we always roll down the windows. And a good, we always just know to put them back up when we're done. And maybe like we can just start telling kids that, you know, "If you want the window down, you can put it down. Just, you have to put it back up." And yeah, that's just my idea for the buses. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Coltes?
All right, Greg Coltes, 17410 Snyder. Many of you don't know me, or know me if you don't. I wear a number of hats in this district. I guess I should talk to you guys. So, I want to go through some of those. As a math teacher and a statistician, I would be hard-pressed to design a better data gathering system than we have here at the district. We send out our little messengers to every corner of this district, and we bring them back with samples from all those households. We put those samples in the little pods of 20 to 30 for about an hour, hour and a half. Then we ring a bell and we stir them all up. And then we put them back into, you know, little samples of 20 to 30, and we ring a bell and we stir them all up again. The virus, anything that's out there, whether it's COVID or anything else, ends up here and gets mixed around with everybody else. It's the way it works, always has. So, the fact that we have as many kids in school right now is due directly to the fact that when they get these COVID kids, which we see getting the emails all the time, the health department goes in and says, "Okay, let's take a look at that little group of 20 to 30. How many were in masks? All of them? Good, we don't have to quarantine." You guys get to stay in school. Now, as a teacher, that's huge because all my lessons are designed to be optimized for in-person learning. That's where I do my best work. I tried that virtual stuff, not a fan. Okay? Keep them here so I can teach them, and what we're doing now is working. As a coach, I coach golf, the best sport to coach in COVID, yes. Everybody's outside, you know, there, there's no physical contact. There's barely any heavy breathing. It's great, okay? But we, my risk is putting them all in the van, taking them there, bringing them back. Once again, we're in a van ride, half hour, 45 minutes. We're over that threshold. If one of my kids ends up positive for whatever reason, I lose two weeks of my season. Not if we're masked. By being masked, it keeps the kids safe and keeps them in school. Okay? That's, that's the biggest thing for me. You guys can't control, for whatever reason, you know, you have your N1H1, you have your flu, but we're treating COVID differently as a country. And the quarantining is what's bringing all these districts down, all the districts that ended up changing their mandate because the kids were at home because they were quarantined, not because they, the minority had COVID, the majority quarantined. All you can do as a district is do what you can to optimize the learning environment for all the kids. And the mask mandate does that. So, thank you for upholding it. Keke and William here so I can coach and teach and do what I do. Thanks.
Are we at the end of the list?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other cards in the audience? Okay, that brings us to the end of our public comments section. Again, thank you to everybody for your comments, especially our young students. That is a very nerve-wracking thing, and it's very impressive to see, to see that happen. So, thank you. All right, Treasures Report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. What I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is go over our finances here a little bit. I can actually address, was it Mr. Zoller? I'm sorry. I can speak to one of your questions, at the very least, and bring folks up to speed. We've had this conversation before, so I don't, do not mind at all going over it one more time. But for the board's edification, and for those of you who may not have heard it, here's, here's pretty much how this whole situation occurred for us here. The, every September, the Board of Education approves a five-year forecast, which is our long-term financial projections. As you are aware, in fiscal year '21, so last year, is when we approved fiscal year '21. That was September of '20. Our financial projections suggested to be very, very conservative with what we were doing. We had just come through COVID in March of '20. The county auditor had recommended to financial advisor, financial folks in the county to project real estate revenue at 95% of actual collection rate. Historically, ours has been slightly greater than 100. The reason it's a little bit greater than 100 is is because there's additional taxes collected on new construction. And then there's delinquent taxes that we receive as well from folks that may not have paid their taxes timely, and then it shows up. So, our number's slightly greater than 100 has been our average, about 100 and a quarter, 100.25. But we were advised to budget at 95% collection. That was my expectation anyway, was to be in the mid-90s because we were uncertain about what COVID had done to folks with regard to being able to pay their mortgage. And most, in most cases, people's real estate taxes are tied to their mortgage payment. So, we knew that we needed to be cautious there. Additionally, we were very cautious with our state funding that we received from the state of Ohio. In May of 2020, in June, the state of Ohio reduced our funding that we were expected to get through, through June, cut us back by about $480,000. Actually, started out in an attempt to cut us by about $800,000, but then they reconsidered that decision and cut us by about $450,000 to $460,000. So, our financial projections were very, very conservative. What I presented to the Board of Education was an expectation that our cash balance would decline from approximately, I'm rounding these numbers, from approximately $11.4 million in cash reserves to about $6.2 million. Then that projection, obviously for a five-year period, begins to move to the right, if you can visualize columns that way. And what happens is, is as you move to the right, your ending cash balance declines even more significantly. Unaware of what was going to happen, that was our position. We also have a board policy that has been slightly revised recently, but at the time, we had a board policy that suggested that any time within the first three years of that forecast, that if the cash balance was going to decline below $5 million, 4.9 million, then the district would look to be on the ballot for additional operating levy. Our projections at that time were showing that in the very next year, our ending estimated cash balance was expected to be below $1 million. So, that trigger, early warning detection system, whatever we want to call it, is what was a red flag that went up. So, we discussed as Board of Education and as administrators what our next step was going to be. As you well know, we talked about that numerous times. It was decided to go on the ballot in May of 2021 because this, in our opinion, the sooner that we were able to secure funding, the better. Because what happens is, you have two opportunities to, to go in front of your voters, that is, in May and November. There are special opportunities of elections, but those usually aren't anything that folks want to participate in. From our side of the world, we're not interested in being on the ballot in February or August because the perception of that is that there's an attempt to sneak something through. Been in a lot of school systems. That's never the intention of to sneak something through. Quite honestly, you prefer, as, as a district, to be on the ballot when more people are out there voting. So, a November election is obviously more popular. Our history in this district of when levies were successful has the majority of the time been in November elections. We did not choose to go on November of '20 because it was already too late for us to enact those resolutions that we had to enact and put together a campaign to be on in November of '20. So, the next opportunity became May of '21. What happened to us, and this is a positive thing, of course, but what happened to us is that in December, we recognized additional revenue from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation. As part of the eight billions back program that the Bureau of Workers' Compensation enacted is that they gave funding back to school systems, I'm sorry, public employers in the state of Ohio. They refunded your 2019 premium, and in our case, that was $150,000, again, I'm rounding. And then as an additional one-time dividend payment, payment, they matched that 150 by 374%. And so, they gave our district an additional $550,000. So, those two numbers there added $700,000 to our district, which was not anything that we anticipated. In December, after tax collections started, we recognized in by January, that when we received our tax advances, that our actual collection rate, if you remember earlier, I talked about our collection rate being estimated at 95, and we were slightly greater than 100 on average. Our collection rate was 104. So, what happened to us, obviously, is I projected a 95% collection rate, and we received 104. 9% on $30 million is $2.7 million more. So, that was above and beyond what we anticipated. That was above and beyond what the county auditor anticipated and recommended that we budget for. And again, this is now January. Finally, in January, the state of Ohio decided that they were not going to cut our state foundation program any further than what they did before, and they were going to actually give us back 250 of the $450,000 that they took back in May. And so, those three items, between the Bureau of Workers' Compensation or additional tax revenue and the change to state foundation, brought our district an additional $3.7 million on the revenue side. That was above and beyond what the expectation was. So, if the expectation was that we were going to end the fiscal year at about 6.2, understand that $3.7 million more takes us to about $10 million. And that's not even speaking to anything on the expenditure side. The conservative idea when it comes to budgeting is that you anticipate your expenses are going to be greater than what they are. And the fact that they were $700,000 less is, again, helps the bottom line. And so, that's what put us in the position, at the time, I believe something may have been circulated in the community, that, you know, they're on the ballot and they've got $10.5, $10.6 million. That was true. That was a very true statement. And that was information that was shared with the Board of Education immediately on a monthly basis. They get documents from me, spending plan reports on a monthly basis, identifying exactly where we are financially and how that compares to what we thought and what actually happened, and then why. So, the explanation has to be, how is something different than what you thought it would be? That's important to have. And the Board of Education this evening approved a July and an August spending plan related to this particular fiscal year. Our current financial forecast, now that we are collecting approximately 100% of our tax revenue, that 104 is now back down to 100, we are receiving exactly what the state of Ohio says that they were going to provide to us. We do not anticipate the Bureau of Workers' Comp giving us back any additional money. That was all done during that COVID period. Our new projections, now moving forward, we believe are far, are going to be far more accurate than anything that's going to come out of the woodwork as it did last year in December and January, that things happened that wasn't predictable. So, what the board approved this evening was, if you'll just bear with me one second, I'll pull up the spreadsheet. What the board approved this evening was an ending cash position this particular school year of just slightly more than $8 million, with projections next year being 4.7, the year after that, $700,000, and then the year after that, there's a negative position. Again, we are within a three-year period where our board policy suggests that the Board of Education seek additional revenue through an operating levy. This financial position's better than the one was last year. Our belief is that we will be considering the idea of an operating levy in November of '22. Right now, it's undecided. We haven't had in-depth discussions. We would like to entertain a permanent improvement levy. I think the community has been, at least has spoken outwardly that that's, they're in support of that. And whereas I believe that's a great idea and that's something that we should have. our situation is going to be that if we put a permanent improvement levy on in November of 22, there's going to be the need for operating money right then or immediately soon thereafter. So, the concern would be, from the perspective of at least me, is I would not want to ask you for a levy in November and then come back and ask you for another one in May. Because I think that the common sense question would be, why didn't you just ask for what you needed in, in November? Why are you coming to me in November and then back to me in May or the following November? If this is what you need based on the forecast, then ask me, the community, what it is that you need. Explain that to me. Show me how you're going to use that money and then we move forward. I don't know if that helps some of your questions. You asked about some of the additional money that we received through. Yeah, we've received CARES funding. CARES is the acronym. We've received ESER funding. And then we've also received coronavirus relief funding. Those are specific to certain things that we're permitted to use that money for. We have that all laid out because that's a, it's, it's a grant like any other grant. So, we have to identify how we expect to use that money. And then we have to support to the Ohio Department of Education that this is how we thought we were going to use it and this is how we used it. Those documents are available and we can certainly put those up for folks to see how we are using that additional money. Again, I'm, I'm generalizing that total amount that we've received since, I'm looking over at my March or April, well, it goes back to March or April of 20. But the actual funding that we received slightly thereafter through what will be ESER III funding, we've received ESER I and ESER II and ESER III is slated to be received. Those, those grants that I just spoke to totaled approximately $1.5 million in total. And very little of that is designed to go toward, payroll is designed to go toward employees. You are permitted to use that funding to help offset the losses that you experienced in your food service program as a result of schools being closed at the time and the fact that we were serving lunches to all students. We did receive federal funding for that, but we were able to offset some additional losses there. We were able to replenish the athletic fund for their loss of ticket sales during the pandemic when, when they weren't permitted to do that. We had to document a history as far as what our expectation, excuse me, what our actual collections were for football seasons and basketball seasons over the past few years. And that's how we identified how much we could allocate there. We hired three additional custodians in the evening. District sanitizers, I believe is the word that we use for those guys. They are spraying down the buildings at night. That is the funding that we can use to pay their salaries and benefits. But most of that money was going to air conditioning units that were no longer working at the middle school in Timmins. We had rooftop air conditioners. So, that whole project or plan has been laid out and we're more than happy to share that with, with the community. And we can probably find a, certainly an opportunity to get up on the website and/or speak to it in the future, certainly. But all the money, for the most part, all the money has been identified as to how we are going to spend it. And like I said, very little of it is going to salaries with the exception, again, of the district sanitizers, the folks that are spraying down the buses in the evening. We have, the supplemental position was created for some bus drivers to go ahead and disinfect the seats and everything else in the evening as well. So, that's all identified within there. So, we, we certainly have a plan for that money. I think you had one other question related to that, but it escapes me right now, I'm sorry.
Is there any chance of asking a question to get a clarification on what you just said?
No, I'd prefer questions after the meeting.
Like off the record after the meeting? Or, I just want to clarify something he's mentioned about the timeframe of the money. Is there any possibility of getting a quick question out there?
Sure, go ahead.
So, you know, maybe I'm, maybe I missed her. In December and January, you realized you had the funds.
This is of '20, yes.
Of '20.
And January of '21, yes sir.
In the election of the May of '21, correct? But I recall seeing paperwork sent out and personally being at a Zoom meeting right before the election where we're still saying we don't have the funds. But here, you're saying we know about it in December and January. So, I guess my clarification, did we know about it in December and January, but we kept pushing saying we didn't have the funds?
We never.
Right up to the election, I was on the Zoom meeting.
So was I.
Running out of funds. And maybe, maybe I'm confused here.
It's okay.
You said that you realized in December and in January more money. That put us at that 10-point something million. But right before the election, we were still saying we were running out of money.
No.
No, that, yes.
It's not what it was.
On the Zoom meeting.
I conducted that.
I'm, I'm going to call it. Yes, for clarification.
Okay.
Just clarifying because it seems right up to the election time we're running out of money.
Right, so we will clarify.
Okay.
So, timing of when you decide to put a levy on the ballot is way before the actual election. So, there's things. Oh, wait.
You don't have the money?
No, we're not doing that. This is a public meeting. We had public comment. You asked for a clarification. I'm happy to clarify, but there won't be yelling from the audience. I'm sorry, it's not appropriate for a public meeting. So, I'm going to move on. We will, you know, we'll talk finances again and we can provide some more clarification. All right. Anything else?
Not for me, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll turn it to you.
Great, thank you. I do want to take a moment just to say that the return of our students and staff to school certainly has brought a feeling of renewed energy back to the heart of our campus. And I commend the students that spoke up tonight and, and appreciate always hearing from our students. I do want to recognize Michael Overman. He has been recognized in the 2022 College Board National Merit Program as a semifinalist in the 66th Annual Contest. More than 1.5 million juniors in approximately 21,000 high schools entered by taking the 2019 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, or the PSAT, with the top 16,000 scorers named semifinalists. Kenton semifinalists are now eligible to continue in the competition to be named a finalist and received one, and, and received one of more than 7,600 scholarships awarded in the spring. I would also like to recognize Kenton High School seniors Cooper Akers, Nyah Ku, Elena Leotis, and Madeline Wardzal were named National Merit Commended Scholars for placing among the top 5% of those PSAT participants. I would also like to tell the community that as part of our PEAK program this week, we're participating in and recognizing Start With Hello Week and our International Day of Peace. Start With Hello is in conjunction with the Sandy Hook Promise, is a week dedicated to educating staff and students on the signs of social isolation, isolation, isolation and the enduring impact that may, that that may have on a student. Kenton is again participating in this week with various activities to build on that awareness and inspire our student action. I do want to provide the community with a transportation update because over the past several years, Kenton has consolidated some of the bus routes to make up for a shortage of lost drivers. But the scarcity of our drivers continues to be a very real problem. It's not just one here at Kenton, it's across the state. Our Kenton Transportation Director is continually working proactively to recruit and train interested drivers. Certainly, if you know of anyone interested, don't hesitate to get in touch with our Transportation Department. We are near the crucial point of not having enough drivers to cover every route to transport all of our students on any given day, depending on illnesses or whatever. Well, we will continue to make every effort to provide a seamless transportation. Our families at some point may be impacted. And so, this may be a simple adjustment in pickup or drop-off times or possibly in extreme circumstances, asking parents to transport their children to school. We ask that parents begin to consider how they would support their child's education and provide necessary transportation if needed. So, we're asking them to kindly have a backup plan. As the leaves begin to change, we do hope to see the last of the orange barrels and the road construction for the year. Our Transportation Department certainly continues to navigate those road closures with our Township Road Department and communicate directly with any families that are impacted by that. So, it's just a reminder to our community on that. Certainly, we've talked before about our safety drills and we continue to have want a safe and peaceful environment for children to learn. But we educate them on to know their plan and their role before an emergency. And so, we do practice those drills. Kenton conducts mock drills for fires, natural disasters, our ALICE lockdown, and of course, our bus evacuations. These drills are done in conjunction with our local first responders and the training is tailored for those different age groups. So, just want to keep that at the forefront. Earlier in September, we did do our district-wide evacuation drills and our students practiced evacuating the bus three different ways and quickly moving to a place of safety. We had thought the worst of our supply struggles were behind us with regards to our nutrition services supply chain. But the fill rates from our manufacturers continue to decline. Products on allocation increase daily. Purchased orders continue to be pushed back and trailer and warehouse space decrease while the need to keep up with our demand and size of our order increases. And I think people, if they've been watching the news, they, you know, have heard that in other places. This all has a trickle-down effect on both of the nutrition service and, of course, our maintenance departments. And it makes their jobs even more challenging. So, our team in the Nutrition Services Department loves nothing more than to serve our students great food. But this is all occurring while our kitchens are experiencing, experiencing larger-than-ever participation, primarily due to the free cost of lunch this school year. So, our team continues to work diligently to stay in contact and work with our distributor, distributors to serve our students. But we want to thank you for your patience and flexibility as we navigate, like many other companies, the scarcity of those supplies. I do want to highlight that over the summer, six of our Kenton students participated in the 2021 Leadership Joga Youth Institute. And this program is a mentoring opportunity when students are paired with a community member in a profession or area of interest that the student would like to explore. As emerging leaders, students were introduced to places, programs, and people in Joga County in government, business, nonprofits, and health and safety. And so, we love that partnership with our youth and certainly Leadership Joga. For the first semester, parent-teacher conferences will be held virtually. Each building will soon be communicating in format and directions to all family and that continues to be part of our safety protocols. We do hope to be able to go back and, and have many members of our community back into our classrooms. During the September Board Work Session, our Assistant Superintendent for Business Operations, Mr. Jeremy McDevitt, reviewed with the Board of Education the GPC Group Facility Study and the associated costs with the Board of Education. Overall, the study reports that maintenance is generally good and is reflected in the condition of the buildings. The current plan is to address the projects in rank order and those that need our immediate attention, taking that priority. The availability of financial resources determines the timeline for the district's course of action. However, also remember that funds may be diverted from the projects to address required emergency repairs. This year, we do have the Ohio School Report Card that will be released in mid-October due to federal waivers in reporting requirements. The significant changes to the 2021 District Report Card will include no letter grade will be assigned and no rankings issued by the Ohio Department of Education, limited data for gifted English learner and value-added measures, and no results for 2021 school year except for third grade and high school end-of-the-year exams. This additional information will be shared when the report card is released. And we thank Dr. Pope for giving the Board an update on that information. And then on Monday, September 27th, the Joga County League of Women Voters will be in conjunction with the High Schools Political Action Committee of Kenton. And they will, the League of Women Voters will host a Candidates Forum for Residents at 7:00 PM here in the High School Auditorium. Candidates representing the following races and issues will be in attendance. South Russell Village Council, the Chagrin Falls School Board of Education, Bainbridge Township Trustees, Kenton School Boards of Education, Issue One, Joga County, which is streets, roads, and bridges, Issue Four, South Russell Village, current expenses, and Issue Five, South Russell Village, streets, roads, and bridges. I do want to let our parents know that we will be having our Kenton's Annual Homecoming Parade, which will take place Thursday, October 7th. The parade, which begins at 6:00 PM, certainly will feature the Kenton Band and the drill team, building floats, and individual participants. And the theme this year is Fall Harvest. We have also, our high school administrative team has been working closely with parents and students to put on their homecoming dance. They will have that in two sessions of two-hour blocks. They'll be also using their outdoor area. But this is the only way for them to include students. It's our largest event and we want that to be a safe event. And so, if you have additional questions with that, please don't hesitate to contact Mr. Tom Gabram at the high school. But hats off to the high school team for keeping our homecoming at the forefront for all of our students and, and coming up with a way to do that to best serve all. We do ask for the parade, that that begins at the high school staff parking lot. So, we do ask you to please park in the high school student parking lot between the middle school and intermediate school and spread out along the route up to the middle school lawn. They will also be celebrating Homecoming Week with Spirit Week and district-wide themes. So, we do encourage even our youngest learners to participate in this. But on Tuesday, October 5th, it'll be the favorite team, our college jersey. Wednesday, October 6th, western wear. Thursday, October 7th, will be pink for breast cancer awareness. And Friday, October 8th, our high school class shirt or certainly their, their Kenton spirit wear. I would also like to thank the administrative team. Recently, the principals on behalf of the administrative team expressed their gratitude personally to me. They talked about the leadership as we worked together establishing a safe learning environment during COVID and for all the additional responsibilities that were placed upon them. Our collaborative efforts allowed for valuable input into the total decision-making process. And I personally would like to thank the administrative team and the Board of Education for their devotion and dedication to our students, staff, and the Kenton community. So, with gratitude to our administrators and certainly our Board of Education. They certainly have done the heavy lift and we appreciate all that collaboration. So, thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Anything else for the good of the group? All right, I do need a motion. We need to have a, a brief executive session to discuss negotiation and contracts, right? Are my words correct, Paul?
Yes ma'am.
So, can I have a motion to move into executive session?
A motion?
Tom, can I have a second? Bill, thank you. All right, and for awareness of the public, no business will take place when we come out of executive session. We'll come out, we'll adjourn the meeting, and we'll be done for the evening. So, thank you for your attendance.
All in favor of that motion?
Oh yeah, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Paul.